Good evening. Welcome to the February 22 meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take care of it just a little. I would like to move approval of the minutes for the November 17th, 22, December 15th, 22, and January 25th meetings, the minute meetings. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. Therefore, I would move that we open the public, continue the public meeting for the Camp Victory Lake 21-15Z. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Welcome, please.
Can you get everyone?
How are you tonight, sir?
Good. How are you guys?
Good, good. Let me just summarize a little bit here. The applicant camp Victory Lake has asked for two variances, one for exceeding the 100-foot creek limitation, and a second for building height exceeding the building height variance. In the December meeting, the resolution to approve the variance did not pass the vote of the zoning board of appeals. In January, the board voted unanimously to reconsider this action, and today, the board will vote whether or not to reverse the December decision in total or in part with or without modifications for each of the two variances. In all the discussions today, I think we want to keep in mind the balancing principle. Does the benefit for the applicant outweigh the detriment to the community? And that's a question, I think, that this board is wrestling with, and we need to continue to do that. I would first, like, is there any, anybody else from the public here to make comments? No? Okay. I would like to, we have received a letter, and I would like to, if I can find it here, I'd like to read this. This is from Joseph Bolander III, stated February 13th. Dear zoning board of appeals, this letter is written regarding the proposed Camp Victory Lake variance requests, which are before the board. As an adjoining landowner, I have a concern which I request that you address when reviewing this proposal. I would like to articulate my support of the request with one condition. I own the property on 301 Netherly, Netherwood Road, located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Netherwood Road and North Quaker Lane. I'm a third-generation owner of the property and inherited it from my father and grandfather. On January 25th, I attended the zoning board of appeals meeting during which the Camp Victory Lake variances were discussed. It is my understanding that the Camp Victory Lake camp is proposing the following: change the maximum permitted building height in the Green Belt District from 35 to 47.5 feet for construction of a stadium-style sanctuary space. And two changed stream corridors set back from 100 feet to zero feet from the Fall Creek, from the Fall Kill Creek for a stream crossing and other construction incursions. The camp representatives indicated at the meeting that the events would be moved indoors to reduce noise to the neighbors. This proposal is a definite attribute to the community. I have lived at the location for many years and am very familiar with the summertime events. At peak times throughout the summer, the events can start in the morning hours and conclude late in the evening. The events include public speakers and live music. Historically, the amplified aspect of these activities has mostly, has most definitely impacted the quite, the quiet, and it should be quiet, enjoyment of the neighborhood. Adjoining landowners were clearly able to hear the speeches and music, which were amplified across the entire local area. The natural amplification based on the topography of the area only enhanced the noise level. It is my understanding that the stadium-styled space at 47.5 feet high and 47,000 square feet will move all amplified events, such as music and speeches, indoors. As such, I would like to support approval of the variance. However, I would request that the variance include language that would include, which includes amplified activities to take place within the indoor stadium and limits the maximum noise level to reasonable decibels to ensure the quiet enjoyment of the community throughout the year, and especially at a time of the year when neighbors are outside and have their windows open. Historically, Camp Victory Lake has been a good neighbor. I have, I have had the opportunity to meet the camp staff from time to time and admire their commitment and mission. Sincerely, Joseph Bolander. Let me stop there, and any comments or thoughts relative to that?
My only comment would be that part of our reason for doing this is to bring some of these larger events indoors. So that's kind of outlined in our ZBA narrative, where we're explaining that this will ultimately reduce the amount of noise generated by a site. So that is achieving what he is looking for.
Okay.
I would speak to that. Mr. Bolander doesn't live there anymore. He lives about eight miles away. In fact, Victory Lake camp is closer to West Park, which is across the river than it is to Mr. Bolander's house.
Joseph Bolander III?
But he's renting, I think he has the property, he rents it out to tenants.
Yes, he does. So the future, he won't be involved in very much. But he does make the request with the one condition, and I don't think that condition can be required or that you would be able to fulfill that. Is that true?
And the part of it which makes sense is that reasonable noise level is what he asks for.
If I might, I'm Bill Hirst from Young Summer. I'm standing in for Allison tonight. As I heard the condition, it sounded fairly absolute, all events, all noise, all contained indoors. That would, I think, be a standard more stringent than is applied to Mr. Bolander's property of its own and himself. So that kind of an absolute restriction, I think, is probably not reasonable under the circumstances, but certainly, I don't know if the town has a noise ordinance that would be enforced for outdoor activities typically, so I mean, there'd be compliance with that as an extra safeguard, but I think, as Peter said, the overall thrust of the application is to move things indoors that belong indoors without excluding the possibility that the other property might be used.
I guess what I'm getting at is that I'm going to hit this pretty hard, and that is, he articulates support based on one condition, and it was all-inclusive, and you can't meet that or don't plan to meet that. So the letter really isn't support.
I don't know that it's whether they can or cannot. I don't think it's legally enforceable as a condition because it inhibits their property in a way that would not comply with the law.
I agree, but his sentence is, "I would like to articulate my support of the request with one condition."
Well, I don't really want us to sit and speculate as well. You've received the commentary. That is a condition that council would not advise, is applicable to any decision or modification, as I think it would be unreasonable to say that you have a substantial property and you have to be limited to the indoor area only. You can use the rest of the property as well as what council is saying.
I don't think that's what he, I think he was talking about the outside activities as far as the loudspeakers and that kind of thing.
Well, that is the intention. Amplification would take place inside.
All of it?
Certainly your large, your large.
Or some of it.
Most of the, what you're talking about, the way that it's set up.
So again, the letter, the letter does not support based on what you're telling me.
I put a note that said conditional support, if that helps with the terminology.
Yeah, we'll put a little asterisk next to it.
So, yeah. So I think we're in agreement on that. We can call it conditional support.
Thank you.
He's not getting the condition, so may not be in support of this, is the point you're making.
Most of the buildings now, they're out, they're tent, so they're outside, so you will hear the noise, you will hear the speakers, because it's not enclosed.
And it also kind of highlight, the, one of the key factors is that this building is going to be a presentation building. There's going to be a stage, it's going to have audio and visual equipment. So at that point, all of the very amplifier, the amplifiers, speakers, amplification, that's all going to be enclosed in the building as part of the design and construction.
You don't think that the speakers will go up on the outside of the building?
No.
No, because of the audiovisual and the technology that you're going to be using that's inside in terms of the space and the seating.
People that don't fit inside, you want to let them enjoy?
Well, the building is going to be much larger than what we currently, substantially larger than what we currently have.
So you'll be able to have any amplification in the building to handle the size crabs that you anticipate? Okay.
And with the higher ceiling, it gives them a chance now, they could view it on their phones, they could view it sitting under a tree with technology. There's, you know, nobody's going to be putting chairs around a large building to listen anymore.
Let me, let me move on, because I think we received that letter, we.
Entered it in record.
Entered it into the record. Let me ask, as you've come from last month, is there any new information, any new ideas relative to either the, either of the two variances that you'd like to talk about tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. So per your guys' request, I prepared an additional two exhibits. I believe they were circulated to you earlier yesterday, I believe. So the two exhibits I'm bringing up is, one, the stream encroachment exhibit, which identifies specifically where we're proposing some disturbance and some improvements. I want to note that while this is fairly colorful, the amount of actual hardscape that will be placed within the encroachment, the 100-foot encroachment, is actually significantly less than what is indicated. The code is structured that you have to identify disturbance as well, but in reality, the 1.3 acres of disturbance within the encroachment is actually only accounting, or equating to about a quarter of an acre of actual impervious surface within the encroachment area.
Is that just with the bridge going over?
That's with the, the widening of the stream or the road for the buses, and there are several areas where the parking area is also within that encroachment, so that is a hardscape. But for, just to clarify, all of that hardscape, any stormwater generated from its construction is all treated through a series of stormwater management practices. So again, I just wanted to highlight that particular aspect.
And the storm management practices that you're employing?
They're, yes.
How often do they have to be upgraded, cleaned, or serviced?
As part of New York State DEC regulations, it's part of the SWIP Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. You actually have to have, come up with a maintenance checklist for all stormwater practices. That gets developed as part of the plan and incorporated. So there will be a short-term maintenance for short-term practices such as silt fencing or temporary sediment traps, and then there will be long-term maintenance procedures for the maintenance of swales, infiltration basins, and things like that. So that's.
Right. Upon completion, how often will somebody have to inspect it or?
It'll all be outlined in our maintenance plan. I don't believe there's anyone from the town that inspects stormwater practices after construction, correct?
I believe there's an inspection that's required periodically, that the inspection report actually goes to the property owner. It only comes to the town, I believe, if we ask for it, but there is a maintenance aspect probably every five years.
So who does that?
Their engineer.
Their engineer, okay.
Now, the incursion, Peter, it looks, I'm looking at your sheet here. We know there's an incursion of the road going over the creek. Are you saying that there's a, what is the additional? I see the 100-foot line here, and there is some dark area there that appears to be incur, in, coming into the 100-foot area. What is that?
Sorry, do you want, mind if I point it out on the map?
Yeah, no. Yeah, please.
Which direction?
Yes. Yeah, okay, now go up, yeah, no.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, those.
Black, this and this?
Those, there's four of them there. Looks like.
So I believe we were referring to this area?
No.
No, not that one?
No.
This is the 100-foot line here.
Sorry, this is a 100-foot. This is a 200-foot.
Okay, all right. So we have parking, we know, we have some there. What is, what is the?
Yes, this is proposed grading. So as we're leveling it out and trying to make sure that the parking areas are properly pitched towards the stormwater management practices, we have to do a little grading. So these are all kind of smoothing out the existing topography.
Gentlemen, we save microphones.
Please take the microphone so we can.
And also.
Oh, so people can see the drawing.
My bad. So yeah, so these dark lines that are within the identified encroachment areas is actually proposed grading. Once that is completed, the site will be stabilized and seeded, and then it will just return to lawns. So all of this currently is on, will be graded to accommodate some of the stormwater and the pitch for these parking lots, and then, once graded, stabilized, and seeded, and returned to how it currently looks.
So parking here, which is outside your line here, parking here intrudes on the 100-foot. Is that correct?
Correct. These areas, these parking areas are within the 100-foot.
That's the only one.
That one, a little bit of this corner, and a little bit of this road straightening here.
Okay. Then, we had talked about, and Rich, you had talked about a 50-foot corridor where the bridge is.
It looks like they don't need that much.
How much do you need for the, for the bridge going over the creek?
25 feet. What do you?
We have the road being called out at a uniform width of 20 feet. Right now, it's at 15. So we need an additional five feet on the.
Do you need an additional amount for the actual improvement, so like, machines can go around the sides and stuff, I mean?
Right, so I, I put in offset, so I did a five feet, and then I did an additional, I believe it was three additional feet to kind of accommodate for any disturbance within there. So that is reflected in the plans.
So it's 20 feet?
Yes.
Okay, for the, the total width here?
Total width, yep.
Okay.
So the incursion on the 100-foot is the 20 feet in the road, you're grading here, you have small amounts here in terms of parking, what's the surface here?
Asphalt, yep. But then you'll, they'll all be pitched towards these stormwater management practices. So this is a, this is a p-gravel diaphragm going into a sand filter, which is supposed to take particulates out and then infiltrate it.
Okay.
Questions?
No, very clear, thank you.
Perfect. And then, so our second, ready for the magic trick? The second exhibit was a markup of the building elevation to show relatively how high the structure is compared to some of the surrounding. So one of the main items I mentioned was the Eleanor Nursing Facility. So if you take a look at that prior exhibit, where I've kind of rough estimated the height of the structure that is across the lake, so for reference, our structure is to the south, and then to the north across Victory Lake is the Eleanor Nursing Care Facility. So if you take a look, our structure ends at a slightly higher elevation of 360 feet of elevation, whereas, I kind of, again, this is a rough estimate based off of me kind of eyeballing it and how structures typically work via floors. Their structure is at a 354 elevation. So ultimately, the peak of our structure is about six feet lower than the estimated height of their structure.
Higher.
Yes, higher, sorry.
Yeah.
But if you take a little, a closer look in here, I worked and calculated the approximate height of their structure, which some of their mechanical equipment portion of the structure, which doesn't have any residence, is recessed a little bit, and so I estimated that theirs total building height is about 72 feet compared to our 63 feet. So ultimately, our structure will be recessed into the ground and also at a lower overall height.
But with a little different picture? It shows that it's a very narrow portion that has that height. It's probably what, the elevator or machine area?
I'm thinking it's probably roof access machinery.
Yeah.
But I would also point out that a very small portion of our structure will have, maybe not very small, but only a portion of our structure will actually be in exceedance.
100 feet long?
Well, so if we bring it down here, so the cupola, which is this portion right here, is shown between 360 and then it ends at approximately, let's say, 335, right around there. So if you look at 335, that's pretty much the equivalent height as the Eleanor Nursing Care Facility, as their main floor is at, the floor just.
With the exception that if you move up to the next one, you can see that it's probably about 100 foot long.
Point that out, Rich, for us.
This, this is the one he's pointing out, which we're looking at this way.
Show Paul.
This is the, where it actually is.
This side?
Yes.
Yes. Correct.
Thank you.
That's the east elevation.
Is that right? Right, that's, that's what people see from the other side of the road.
They see it from the east.
So they would see this from, this would be North Quaker. So this is a North Quaker view. So say, North Quaker is traveling up this way, and if you look right while you're driving, you can look at the structure. One thing I do want to highlight is that none of this reflects the extensive landscaping plans that we developed and the existing landscaping, which we are, we're not proposing to disturb. So it's all going to be very well screened by existing and proposed landscaping.
Okay. Go ahead, here, any, anything else on this?
No, other than that, I think this is a pretty self-explanatory. I really wanted to give it a sense of scope that this structure is not going to be the tallest or the most prominent in the area. If anything, it'll be equivalent to an existing structure, which is 400, 500 feet to the north of it.
Well, I would disagree, because the other one sits off the highway further, so the distance makes it appear smaller. But also, I was noticing that the building starts at about, we got a floor level of 297. Eleanor's had a floor level, I think, about 282?
Correct.
So that's, that's a considerable difference, right? 297, that's 15 feet. Dave asked a question at the last meeting, and he suggested maybe the whole building could go down four, five, six feet.
So my, our biggest concern is that, what, if we recess it, it still doesn't really change the nature of the variance.
It changes the height, but it changes the height in perception to the other houses around.
So with that in mind, this is a completely separate site. So when they developed this structure, and I believe the 50s, I'm not entirely sure what sort of issues they might have ran when they were building it and sinking it super far deep into the ground. I know that the, the way the topography, topography for our site works is that this is a very achievable level. If we sink it down, we'll be excavating large chunks of land, creating greater disturbance, with really zero effect on the variance being requested.
Well, you couldn't bring it down, like, you couldn't go into the ground like five, five more feet, just, just to help with the height?
I think there's sections of the building that's lower into the ground than other section based on the topography of the land.
Right. No, so our, our floor elevation is at 297, but you'll have other portions that are kind of recessed into the ground, and there is a substantial recess. So if you actually look from here, this actually, from the intersection of Crum Elbow and North Quaker, I checked that it was about 332 feet of elevation, right? So if you look here, 332 puts you here. So you're really only seeing approximately, 32, I don't know math.
25.
25 feet. So I would say.
So you're seeing 25 feet above the level of the, of the road at the Crum Elbow, Quaker corner.
Correct, which is probably the most traveled portion where this building will be visible from.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any idea, there are, if I understand correctly, there are two residential houses, one right on the corner of Quaker and Crum. On the, it would be on the northeast corner.
Right here.
And I think there's one on the, would be the southeast corner, right, yeah.
Southeast, so right here.
Yeah, right there and on the other side. Do we, I think the house on that corner is elevated above.
It is.
Yes. It's at, it's at 340. So it, when a guy, when somebody walks out their door, they'll see this roof here is what they would look at if they walked out the front.
So they're going to see about 10 or 15 feet of the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you go to the north, the people to the north, they, some of them, their finished floor level is 190, they will see probably almost all 60 feet of that end of the building. 60 feet is about 20 feet taller than any of the telephone poles around here, I think.
But again, that's going to be, going to be covered with the foliage and the trees.
I don't know if it's going to go 60 feet.
I believe mature sugar maples, which I believe, I believe that's the landscaping we're growing, mature to 50 to 70 feet, so.
Just something to keep in mind.
Over the course of?
Many years. But we're hoping the camp remains active over the course of many years.
Rich, you may not be here by the time they get to polite.
Yeah, I won't see it.
Can you put in taller trees, meaning can you, are you open to trying to shield more of the view on the east end, meaning taller, denser stuff on the, on the Quaker lane?
On this side, correct.
Yeah. Can you, are you willing to try to do a more effective screening job? That's where it's most exposed.
There, there comes a point, I'm not sure the exact decibel or diameter of trees that we have specified in that area, but we could definitely specify a larger diameter tree, which ultimately is a faster, it's more mature, it's all, it gives you more screening outright, and then grows faster to maturity. So we can look into that.
Yeah, because if you can do a better job of screening the views, I think that might address some of Rich's concerns and, I mean, you can't necessarily block the whole view of the building, but if you can screen it better, it's less obtrusive.
Yeah. So before we leave the issue here, the 15-foot difference between the Eleanor Nursing Home and the finished floor level of your building, proposed building, if you were to bring it down, I understand that you would have to dig deeper, and you may have to modify some of the sides, and you may have to put in stairwells in some locations or ramps. So I, but I do believe it's possible.
Any thought on that in terms of the engineering of that? I know you talked a little bit about it before, Peter, in terms of.
Yeah, I, I really, I hesitated to say if that is actually going to be feasible, because one thing to keep in mind, it's if we recess the building, right, everything needs to be recessed significantly, because our parking area is at 290, or at 313.
It does not. It does not.
Why?
Because, because you would then, you would just have a ramp.
Yeah, if I could interject on that point, I think this is a situation where you look at cost and benefit.
and benefit. Um, and so reducing the height of the building, digging it deeper into the ground, you're increasing environmental impacts, you're causing all kinds of other ancillary impacts that aren't present now, um, all for what purpose really? Just to get some incremental improvement of sightlines for folks who have noted, have had notice of the application, you know, they know it's here. Um, so you really get into that kind of a situation where, uh, the cost benefit is not there, and that's sort of part of the analysis that we're, um, we're looking at in terms of issue and area variances.
One other thing to keep in mind, too, is that sinking the building down requires everything else to be sung it down. That requires grading to extend even further out into the stream corridor encroachment.
It doesn't, 'cause what you could-
I assure you it does.
You know, well, if, if you depend on the, the grade being moved in the water, you may have to move the water differently. You may have to, you know, pipe it, and then you would have to lower your, uh, filters and all that stuff, yes.
It's sort of exemplifies the point I was making. I mean, you know, you're proposing dramatically different, more significant environmental impacts to make the project happen to mitigate visual impacts, is what I'm hearing, right?
Yes.
And we're, and we're looking at a, a greater impact on the, on the creek.
And you're not eliminating visual impacts, you're just mitigating.
I, I think what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is, I was told that it couldn't be done, and it can be done, but you're telling me that it's cost-related.
I wouldn't say cost in terms of dollar. I'm talking about the detriment to the applicant versus the benefit to the town, which is a legal test you're applying.
Okay.
Okay. Peter, anything else at this point?
At this point, I believe I hit everything that I could hit. So I am happy to answer any more questions.
Okay. Um, what I'd like to propose now is, uh, I think in clarity for all of us, um, is we're going to go through the two variances. I'm going to address each of the board members individually, and we're going to go through each of the five characteristics, and I'm going to ask them to respond in terms of their, uh, concern. And I'm going to start with the height variance, and I'm going to start with Rich. Um, Rich, I'd, I'd like you to address your, if you have questions or concerns about the height variance that they've requested of not producing an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties.
Yes. Um, I think the proposed building height variance will create a visible difference to the surrounding area, as the structure will be taller than nearby homes, telephone poles, even though well-screened and graded for the least next thirty years. Portions of the building will be constructed into the surrounding topography, some portions will stand still over sixty feet, will be visible from North Quaker. The construction of the facility will allow the applicant to hold larger events indoors tha, than currently possible, and that uses an outdoor component. I think that's part of somebody else's. Uh, if there were total indoor venue, it may allow for the possibility of reducing the negative outdoor amplification for a portion of the programs, and I understand all that. But I still believe that the, uh, proposed height is an undesirable change to the neighborhood.
How, how does it change the character of the neighborhood?
All right, well, Dave, if we went to your house, and I think-
Speak into the mic.
If we went to your home, and we looked in the backyard, and from your property line, about a hundred feet beyond your property line, if we were to put up a sixty-foot barrier that's two hundred, or a hundred feet long, I think it would have a negative effect on your feeling about where you live.
Now, if I am living across the road, I've been living across the road for a number of years, the activities have been going on for a number of years.
It's got nothing to do with the activities.
But that's the character of this neighborhood.
It's got nothing to do with the activities. What it has to do with is people's, they're, they're there, and now this thing is in front of them, and they have to live with it.
So you're-
I, I think it's, I think it's-
How are you defining character?
The character? Well, I, I'd say that that is, uh, single-family homes, a small farm up the way, a, graveyard with a, a historical home, uh-
Don't forget the car junkyard.
On the other side, yeah.
You got the car, you've got the car.
I think that's been there longer.
And a nursing home, and I believe it is zoned for this purpose, right?
Yeah.
But, uh, the, the junkyard's probably been there longer than you guys.
Action.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get to, to make sure we understand your, your definition of the, of changing the character of, of, of this neighborhood.
The character is changing because of an implementation of a project that they have defined, and it's gonna affect when these people look out their window. They're, it's gonna be right there. It's not there now, it will be there. That is a change. Simple as that. And, and to me, the, the sheer height of it, the change, is, uh-
So thirty foot there is going to change the character of the neighborhood before?
Thirty, it's, it will be sixty feet visible from those homes. Sixty feet.
Not if you're at the level of the, of the, uh-
Uh, no, you're wrong, because you're not considering the topography.
No, I am considering topography.
So what we'll look at is, this house sits at two ninety. Two ninety-
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
Is here.
Mm-hmm.
That's sixty feet, they'll say. So.
But there'll be trees and other things in the way. So is a sixty-foot tree, is a sixty-foot tree?
There won't be a sixty-foot tree. There won't be.
Okay, so you're defining then, character in this case, as the size of the building?
Character is the way it looks. When you ride through a town, it's the way a town looks. When you ride through a street.
But is it changing what's going across the street?
Which side of the street are you talking about?
Uh, if I'm, if I'm on Quaker, and I am on that house on the corner of Quaker and, uh, and Crum Elbow, I'm on the, I'm on the northeast corner of, of, of Quaker and Crum Elbow, and my house is elevated. And now, I've lived there for-
You have less of an impact, but you don't live there anymore. You moved to Pleasant Valley.
Well, whoever's living there.
Yes.
Whoever's living there. So how many houses are going, how many houses are, do you, are you gonna see?
If we put a building that's sixty feet tall across the street, would it be an impact on the way, the character of the town, the way it looks? Yes.
Depends what's been going on across the street. If you tell me that there have been-
It's awfully abstract, Dave.
Well, no, I'm trying to get to specific here. If there has been a church camp across the street for forty years, and it's been operating for forty years, and that's the character of the neighborhood, that tells me there. I have other structures that are there.
I'm not suggesting that they stop their camp. I think it's a wonderful thing. And as I've said before, and I will repeat, that in my eight years of representing the people in that area, I frequently defended the camp, saying that, you know, they're there, they were there even before these people and the new houses came, and I said, this is, this is what exists. And-
So the-
It's, it's not on, it's not unlike if, uh, there was a farm there and people didn't like the way the cows moved, or if there was an airport there and they didn't like the way that the, the planes were, planes were landing. I mean, it, it, they ha, they exist. I'm, I'm not suggesting that they shouldn't continue.
So if the, you're defining the character as the size of the building, how are you defining a detriment to the neighborhood if the building now is enclosed, uh, the events, it is quieter, and it-
Now you're talking about some, something else.
No, that's all in the character and detriment of the neighborhood.
Well, we, we, we did prove a point that it isn't all gonna be inside the building, and they're gonna increase the number of events. So, I don't know, I think it's a wash. I don't, I don't think that it is, it's, I don't think the benefit is really there.
To whom?
To the neighbors.
But is it a detriment to the neighbors?
Well, well, I, I think that it is. I think that there'll be-
Now, have we heard from any of the neighbors?
Unfortunately, we have not, have we?
We have not.
There've been many, many-
Yes.
Many public.
Many public notices, and no one has come forth except this gentleman recently, which I think is, is crucial in our decision.
Let me ask, in terms of response to that, any, any thoughts on that?
My thoughts on that were, I was gonna bring up the point that, um, we're talking about the height of the building, but I, and the neighbors-
Could you talk into the microphone?
Yeah, we were talking about, you talked a lot about the height of the building in all the public hearings that we've had. We've had neighbors come down before, by the way, and sat in, 'cause I've spoken to them afterwards, and not one of them have talked about the height of the building, and they're very educated, and they know about size, and they know what, um, size can do. The only thing that they continuously talk about was the noise during those two weekends, and then in turn, support the fact that now-
And traffic and-
Right, and traffic, that the roads will be wider, the cops are out there, and that the fact that now the events will be moved inside, and that's what they're asking for. But I'm not sure, um, now, like, who, you know, and those are mostly the people that are around there, and that was their concern.
Most of the people there were on Cardinal Road, right? Uh, up on the hill, behind, behind the camp.
Yeah, some people on Cardinal Road, and then the, the gentleman here is the tenant. But I'm just pointing out that we've been at this for many years, and neighbors have come down before, and not one of them has talked about the height of the building, or it being an unpleasant compared to the junkyard that they've been asking to be cleaned up.
I'm not comparing you to a junkyard, that's for sure.
Just briefly on the issue of character of the neighborhood and community character, uh, I think it sometimes, um, can get a little blurred between individual impacts to individual receptors versus impact to community or neighborhood character. Um, the pertinent question on the second part, community and neighborhood character, is really whether, uh, before this project, this part of the town assumed a particular character. Uh, my assumption is that's agricultural and camp uses, and that's been the character of that part of the town for a very long time. Um, so it seems to me the analysis is whether this project, when constructed, is going to make that character something else. Will people drive through this part of town and no longer have a sense that it's agricultural and camp uses? Or will they think it's agricultural and, you know, who knows what else? Um, so character of the community is a much broader principle than impact on an individual receptor. And that's not to deny impacts on individual receptors, it's just to sort of, you know, sort things out and put them in their appropriate box. So the real issue on, on character of the community is, when this project is implemented, is it still generally gonna look the same out there for people who come to town? Or is it gonna look discordant or completely different?
Okay. Um, let's go on to the, the second, uh, can this height variance be achieved by some other method feasible? Rich, any, your thoughts on that?
Well, let's do it this way, let me see what I got here. Again, although the applicant doesn't want to lower the height, it is possible. In addition, the applicant could move some of the, uh, plans for, uh, to move some of the, uh, applications or uses that are gonna go into the new, bigger building, into some of the existing buildings that you have, they could be repurposed. Um, there's also the fact that you could maybe consider, you're a north, northeast organization, so it's a pretty big organization. Maybe there's another location that is more, um, is built already, or is existing, that has, um, better roads to it, I don't know.
You're saying they should move out of the town to another town?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I was just trying to get clarity.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying for the, it, would the building be better in someplace where they're, you know, like closer to a throughway or, or something where it's easier for people to get to it?
So they should sell that property and find another property?
Nah, that's not what I said.
I'm just trying to get clarity.
I, I say the camp should continue for as long as town is-
No, 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 but there's, one point you made, there's no other building on the camp that would accommodate it inside, but I'm just trying to get clarity. You know, you said find a space closer to a throughway, or?
I don't, I, I'm just thinking, you know, like, how, I mean, you have this piece of property, you have many other ones, right?
Um, no, this is the only camp property.
Oh, you have a camp property, yes.
This is the only open, so unless you're proposing, they sell it and go hit up another neighborhood.
Well, I think you do have other properties, though.
Churches.
I think we're dealing with just this, this-
We're talk, we're talking about this property in Hyde Park, that they've owned for over fifty-something years.
You made a comment that made me think that you, you, this is the only thing that you have, but it is not, right?
This is the only property in Hyde Park.
This is the only-
This is their most beautiful property, because it's in Hyde Park.
And it's the only land space with open space.
Well, there, I think there's six pieces that you own also around the, the camp, yes.
Let me, let me get back to the, the, achieve this in some other way, you're saying, move?
Well, I, no, I'm saying that-
You're not saying move.
I, I'm saying that there, they could lower the building or the height. And I know that they don't want to do that because they've invested so much time and energy into this building.
And cost.
But-
And also, one thing to point out is that e, even if we could recess the building into the ground, it does not change the nature of the variance, which is for a forty-seven and a half foot.
Well, as you go into the ground, you might, you might end up raising some other levels.
Well, Peter, let me understand that. If you lower the, the, the building by five feet, does that lower from forty-seven to forty-two?
No.
Why not?
Because the, the building entrances would also have to be uniformly lowered, the additional five feet. So if I have it at three thirteen right now, it could be brought down to three oh eight, which means the nine, ninety-seven would also have to be brought down the additional five feet.
The entrances could be ramped, and you could, you could conceivably lower that.
But the height of the building is still gonna-
No, because when you, when you lower the building, you ramp into the, you have a, a stairwell, but it's huge, right, for a ramp. I, I, I got you.
Are, are we confusing the heights of the building with where it is in the ground?
Nope. No, I, I think-
So if the building was the same height, then it was lowered ten feet into the ground, that wouldn't solve your problem?
It would be more suitable, I think.
It wouldn't solve our variance, though. We would still have the same variance, because the building is still the same height.
Again, Dave, if you lower, if, if the, if the entrance is here, if the entrance is here, and you lower the building, and you lower the, the entrance area, but maybe you, uh, berm higher on the sides of the entrance. So it, it would lower it. It, it would, but-
Okay. If you lower the building in the ground ten feet, you still have to build the same height building, is what I heard you say?
Correct.
Okay. You would still require a variance of the same amount. So lowering the building into the ground does not alleviate the variance that they're requesting?
Lowering the building and allowing the ground to come up in some additional areas would change the height variance. Fact.
Would not change the size of the building, though.
But the, the height variance that, that they're going for would go down, and it would be perceived lower from the surrounding area.
So is five feet lower acceptable?
I, I think it'd be wonderful, but-
I mean, would, I'm trying to-
Could I just ask one question, Rich? Because you mentioned this before about the maximum height. So we have the average of forty-seven and a half, which is what the variance is requested, but the maximum would then be sixty-three, which you mentioned is like what a neighboring property could see. And I understand mathematically that would be the highest point. But if they even reduced it to what would be a loud, which would be thirty-five feet, they could still, by law, have a structure that would be in the range of fifty to fifty-five feet, depending on how the design is. So even in compliance with the zoning code, the, the structure still could be tall.
Could you repeat that? 'Cause I, I think I lost you on that.
Sure. So what they're asking for is twelve and a half feet higher than what the code allows.
Right.
Code allows thirty-five, they're asking for forty- Code allows thirty-five, they're asking for forty-seven and a half, which-
The calculated height.
Yes. And the forty-seven and a half, as you mentioned, results in actual sixty-three at the highest point, the very, very highest point. So my question is, is even if they brought it down to thirty-five and complied with the law, and didn't even have to be here before the ZBA, they could, that building would still be theoretically over fifty feet tall, so I-
That's where you lose me.
Because if, if it's forty-seven and it gets up to sixty-three, I take that difference, right? So if you take forty-seven minus thirty-five, and sixty-three minus twelve, so you get down to fifty-one feet, because it's based on the measurements like every five feet, right? So I'm just thinking, if you're going to like the maximum height, even in compliance with the law, could still be like twelve, fifteen feet, sixteen feet over what's allowed. I mean, I hope I'm explaining it, I just think that-
I think you lost me.
No, that's correct.
Well, do you understand?
Ted, could you further explain?
Can you maybe translate that?
An A, the peak of an A-frame building can be seventy feet high, and it will not need a variance. It depends on the slope and the length of the highest peak to its associated eve. So yes, it can be, the building peak can be much higher than the thirty-five.
So even with no variance, there's still going to be parts of the building that may be sixty feet high?
Just even redesigned, it doesn't necessarily resolve the issue of what it seems like the main concern is, which is the visual impact. Even in compliance with the code, that doesn't mean everything caps off at thirty-five feet. It's all in how it's measured, which I know you know, but could still rise above fifty feet, so, and they'd be in total compliance with the law. So I just wanted to make that point, because if it's, the visual impact, there would be a visual impact no matter what, whether you give them a variance of twelve feet or whether they build a building that's thirty-five feet in compliance. That was my only thought, because you mentioned the maximum height, and I've made that, had that discussion before.
I'm still confused, because if they, they wouldn't even be here if it was thirty-five feet.
Yes, I understand, so that's the point, is that even if they was in compliance with the law, they could still have a building that maxed out at over fifty feet.
So the impact even under the acceptable height is going to be large?
Yes, it could be, yes.
You've been voicing your concern on that?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Variance numerically, I think we all agree, it's roughly at this point thirty-five percent for that, and that's substantial. Is that, are you comfortable with that? Will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood. Can you speak to that?
Again, I guess that's what I, I still think that the variance will likely have an effect on the physical and environmental conditions. I mean, we're putting in engineered drainage, and so there's things that are going on. We're, we are changing the physical environment to a point where it physically has to be maintained, whereas right now, it doesn't, so.
So you're defining that as the physical impact, even though the systems that they are putting in here in terms of-
I would say that the impacts have been reduced but not eliminated.
Okay, do we have the same impact, the same problem with the current situation of the camp?
No.
But there's no control over the water at this point?
And you don't need it, because there's not a parking lot there, it soaks through the ground, becomes groundwater.
But this, this system that they're talking about is designed to-
But Chair, listen, it's just about the impact for the height variance, so specifically related to the height, because the planning board did seeker, they dealt with the parking lot, all of the other site plan elements, so it's just the impact directly related to the height is what this variance is at issue.
Well, again, then the height and the additional screening could provide additional shading on North Quaker Lane that may have an adverse effect, and under certain weather conditions, cause quick freezing and black ice on that portion of the road.
I just want to point out, too, that if, you read the narrative, it explains that in order to achieve the capacity, the height is integral to get that seating, trial seating. We could come in with two fifty thousand square foot buildings that are thirty-five feet, and that causes significantly more disturbance. So the fact that we are requesting a height variance to fit more people into a smaller area does ultimately help the environment by reducing disturbance, reducing impervious, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
Self-created, is self-created?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go on.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
It was brought up about health and safety, health and safety. Can someone, maybe the attorney can reiterate what that means?
Do you have a specific question?
In terms of the criteria that we have to review.
It's, I mean, the standard is the detriment to, the detriment to the community versus the benefit to the applicant, and then you assess the five factors as we've done. So I'm unclear about what the question is for health and safety as related to the height variance, or the stream corridor variance, and how that would impact the health of the community?
Can we hold that and come back to it?
Peter, thank you for these. Exactly what I needed.
Let's move ahead, and then when we come there. Jerry?
Yeah, I'm up next. I prepared a statement. The requested, number one, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental to nearby properties. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue or other than requested variance. Number three, the requested variances are numerically substantial. Number four, the requested variances will likely not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. And number five, the difficulties are self-created.
Okay. Paul, let's talk about height variance not producing an undesirable change in the neighborhood or detriment to nearby. Can you tell us your thoughts on that?
I think the architect makes a compelling case. I haven't seen any neighbors complain. He just stated that a redesigned sanctuary could still be higher than what the code allows, so.
Okay. What about, do you think that, any questions in terms of achieving this in some other way?
Well, there's been a lot of discussion about bringing the building down, but they would still need a high variance, so.
Variance is numerically substantial, you sense that? Thirty-five percent?
Yeah.
Okay. How about, do you feel that there's a, do you have questions about some adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood by building this?
Well, he said it's going to be blocked by trees, correct?
Trees and topography, yep. And again, I want to highlight that we're not trying to build an ugly building either. This is, we're trying to build a nice building that's going to look good, that people, that the camp can be proud of, and the community could be proud of. So I want to highlight that particular aspect as well.
All right, so you're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
And it's self-created? Okay.
Chair, I just want to address Paul's question briefly. So the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood, I mean, this is something for the board members to discuss, it is part of the analysis. From what I recollect, as far as the discussions, I don't think health issues have been raised. I think you asked a question, not at the last meeting, the one in December, about fire safety and access, and from my recollection, there was an access road built for the fire department. I think that the planning board reviewed that, correct me if I'm wrong, and that there was complete access to the building, so that wasn't a safety concern. I don't think anybody has raised any safety or health issues as related to the community, surrounding community, or any detriment in that regard that I can recall. But that is certainly something to consider for all of you members in your analysis.
I think, I think the fire, what it was, was we moved the building a little bit so that they could get their ladder up and down.
Right, we had to install the fire access lane, I had met Ray at the fire department, he told me specifications and how to get that to work, so yes, that was added just for that.
So Paul, if you have other questions about that, let me know, or let Peter know. But that's what I recall.
Okay. Any other questions, Paul?
No.
Okay. Jim?
I've given this a lot of thought, because I've lived in the area a long time. I've driven by the camp for decades, and as I rethought my thought process, the building is not unattractive, so I don't really have a problem with that. I was initially more concerned with the character and the appearance, you know, the first criteria, but I think it is telling, as a board member, that there's been no commentary from the people that live around there. And if they're so concerned with it, why have they not been here? That's something I've rethought, and I think, I'm not overly concerned, Dave, with the character or appearance of the neighborhood, because it's, one, it's not unattractive. I've gone by that junkyard for decades. I've actually bought stuff from there, but that's a real eyesore, kind of across your entrance, so. I'm not convinced the character and the appearance of the neighborhood's going to be negatively affected. I respectfully don't concur with some of Rich's sentiments. I mean, we're all entitled to our own sentiments, but I think it's an attractive building. I'm not sure anybody living nearby is going to be getting up or driving by saying, oh, what's that thing that I can see through the trees? People are busy, you drive through there, and I think if you can assure the board about just screen, really screen, bigger, wider trees, tall trees, you can totally obscure the building, but if you can do a more effective job of screening it, that, I'm settled with that. What's number two, Dave?
Number two is, can they achieve it by some other means feasible?
I'm not convinced you can achieve it in some other means, because I don't think it's up to myself to tell you to re-engineer it. I understand the cost, and I do understand, I think better, about two small buildings, the environmental impact, that kind of makes some sense to me. And I, no, so I don't, no, I don't think there's some other means, really.
Variance is substantial?
Numerically, it is substantial.
Any, you think the adverse effect on, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
I think that's possible, based on whatever your internal, you know, how many events, try to control timing of, and at a reasonable time. They're, you know, I have to trust the planning board did whatever traffic studies. I mean, I'm not an engineer, I don't want to be, so I'm going to have to assume they've done their homework. Maybe we could have, as a board, been more involved with some of those steps where we weren't, so. I could argue both sides of the coin that there could be more noise, but hopefully you guys will do what's necessary to minimize that noise, because you want to be a good neighbor, obviously, you don't want people irate and going on and on, so I have less of a concern with that. I just ask you to do the, set some controls for time limits and, you know, be a good neighbor to the people that live around there. What's number five or four?
Self-created.
It's self-created.
Yeah, it is self-created. Okay, thank you. Any response or ideas from these members in terms of new ideas or questions?
One thing we'll definitely look into is adding the thicker caliber trees along, definitely the Quaker Road, where that, the larger portion of the building will be more visible, so we'll look into beefing up the caliber that we're proposing, so.
Yeah, I think what the most you can do to shield it, you can do a little more, in my opinion.
Yeah, we'll look into our landscaping plan and see what we can do, add a couple more trees, add a little bit bigger trees in there, so.
Will that be presented at a future date to Hyde Park or the board, or how's that addressed?
It will be reflected in our next planning board submission, where they're reviewing the landscaping, all of that.
Okay. I'd like to add my thoughts to this, too. I think, I don't see this producing, in fact, I see this producing a more desirable character in the neighborhood. You have a more professional building, you will have control of the noise to the neighborhood properties. That's been, if anything has been mentioned, it's been the noise level, not the presence. Yes, there are probably a number of events where the traffic will be difficult for a couple of times. I think we have not, I guess what's also here is we have not heard from any of the other neighbors other than, other than the one gentleman, and we have probably sent out notices to them, I'm going to say, over, well, over the period of time this has been going, ten or twelve times, and we have not received that. And they are the ones that really are seeing the effects, the current effects, and what might be the effect of the new building. I think, can the building be lowered? When we look at the heights, I still think from the corner of Quaker and Cromelbo, you've got, you're looking at, there's some discussion whether it's twenty or thirty feet in terms of what you can see, but that is going to be, I think, hidden a lot by the shrubs and the trees, et cetera. I think that, to my concern, one of my concerns, and it spills over into the hundred-foot corner, but I will just say this, if you change the size of the building to lower the heights for this variance, I think we're going to run into an awful lot more concern in terms of the environment and the creek. And that creek is one of the key sources for the Falkil watershed, which goes all the way down through Poughkeepsie, and I worry about that. And I think what you've put together here addresses, the building addresses the ability to handle the environment, so I'm much more satisfied with that. The variance is numerical, numerically substantial. I don't think, again, if we look at the impact of the physical or environmental conditions, physically, what is, what, it's a mystery, what is physical environment here? I mean, yes, it's going to look different, you're going to have a larger building, you're going to have a professional building there. To me, that's going to be better, that'll be an improvement. Environmentally, I think it is not going to have an adverse effect, so I'm pleased with that. I think, I'm trying to think if we have, the character of the neighborhood with the auto place, and to the west, there is another church camp, which I don't think is, that's a separate, separate camp from you. So the character of that general neighborhood, I don't think is going to be, in fact, I think it will be improved. I think the fact that, oh, I had a question. The original plan, how high was the original building going to be?
The original building, that was, I think the base structure was like a hundred feet, and then we had a really large cross mounted on top.
Okay, so we take off the cross because that's not a part of a variance. The building itself was going to be, how much higher, how much, how much have you reduced the height of the proposed building?
But you changed locations, too, right? I mean, wasn't that-
No, so we had to actually change the location from the northern section.
Right.
That was for Blandings Turtle, we brought it down to the southeast where all that disturbance was. But in that area, we had planned a much larger structure. I don't have the, we've been so far removed from that original design, I don't have the exact height, but it was substantially taller. I'm fairly certain it was around a hundred feet high, the peak of the roof, so.
Is the, was there a change in the building height in terms of the existing site that you're proposing? you're proposing now?
Can you rephrase that?
Yes. You answered that already.
The, the current location where you're proposing to put the building?
Yes.
At the current height, was there a earlier version where that building was higher?
Yes.
How much?
It was, it was higher and it was larger. So it was at 61,000 square foot. So ours was, we brought it down. So because of the height concerns, we actually had a unique style of seating where it's even, as we, stadium-style seating now kind of goes slowly down, slips down. We had an arena-style seating where the height, the seats were stacked up higher, and it created like kind of a, kind of like a convex, I don't know, shapes, but a horseshoe around the stage.
Okay.
So to fit that, the building was much higher, and so we reduced it and turned the stadium-style seating to be more traditional.
So in this planning, in terms of your work, you have reduced the size of the building on its current site substantially?
Yes.
And the size of the building you have reduced?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any comments you want to make on what you've heard here that, in terms of correction or assistance?
I don't think there's any other additional comments I can have other than what I've already said before. The intent, Camp's intention is to be a good neighbor. They don't want to really, they don't want to affect neighbor and properties. They just want to do what they can to improve their facilities. And so I just wanted to reiterate that. And I believe we've spent many, many years designing a plan that is both beneficial for the environment and really tries to reduce the impacts that we're here for, so.
Okay. Let's move on a little quicker to the creek variance. As you've talked, Peter, a little bit about it, the primary variance now has gone to 20 feet, 20-feet variance going over the creek in terms of the road. And then you have, in that 100-foot section, or in that 100-foot measurement along the building, you have basically, my words, you have, you have, you have layered the, the ground there in, in different layers. And you have, you do have incursion with blacktop in a small portion of the, of the parking that incur, comes into the 100-foot limit.
Correct.
So those are the two pieces that would, would, would come into the 100-foot variance. Those are the two.
Physical pieces of it, yes.
And I think it's also important that no other incursions are permitted with this variance, should it pass, that include anything else. In other words, the variance is exclusively for those things that you have shown us here. It's not a license to vary other things within that 100-foot char, corner.
Yep.
And I think, as, as we address that, that, we will want to include that. Okay. Let's go then individually. Rich, in terms of the creek variance?
I think that the diagram explains it much better than trying to do it verbally.
I agree 100%.
I agree to that.
It would have been impossible.
Yeah, it really would have, so. I'm glad, I'm glad you guys recommended to put that together. It was very, it's, and it's cool. Yeah, you get the chance to work with color, which I normally get to do, so.
So any, any concern about the, again, the character of the neighborhood in terms of the creek variance?
I am, I'm good with the creek variance.
Okay. So one through five, you're, you're okay. All right. Jerry?
Similarly, I'm 100% okay with the creek variance, all five.
All right. Paul?
Ditto.
And James?
Ditto.
Okay. That's much quicker. I think, as we've talked, we have a, a growing concern about the Fall Creek watershed. I think we're going to see a lot more with climate change that's going to impact that. And I think you're, if I'm, if, correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of the reconstruction of the road over that, you are including larger?
Culverts.
Culverts, thank you.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look. We're sizing, they're pretty substantial right now. I believe they're three-foot diameter culverts.
There's a dam, too, right?
Yeah, there's a dam, too.
The dam is, is lower than that, though. It goes, that's.
Upstream.
It's upstream, yeah.
Upstream.
Okay. Is it east of the, of the river?
East.
It's, or west of the river? West of the, of the road?
East of the road, yes.
Oh, yes, okay. And are you rebuilding that?
Uh, that was not our intention. We've, right now, it's currently holding water just fine. Even if we were going to rebuild it, that would be, I believe, a repair and replace through Army Corps. So it's, I don't think we would have to come back for variance for that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any, anything else on the, on that? Okay. If we are, if there are no other comments, then I would, council, we're due to close the, the public hearing at this point.
Yes, there, yes, you asked for public comment, there were none.
Okay. All right. Move for closing of the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. All right. Now we come down to, I think, we have the question of voting on, voting to reverse the December vote and approve both variances as stated in the December resolution, or to vote on each variance individually with modifications. I would suggest that we look at each of the variances and vote on those separately. Do I need a motion on that?
Yes. And to clarify, the authority to do a rehearing is under Town Law 267A subsection 12. The issue is we're dealing with a decision from December of 2022 that denied both variances. The board is authorized to reverse, annul, or modify the prior decision. Unanimity is required, though, so that's kind of where everything hinges on that. Any decision that would change the prior decision must be unanimous. So the board can reverse in part and modify in part, so I would defer to the chair, but perhaps you can approach it with a motion to reverse the portion of the December decision related to the stream corridor setback, subject to the condition that the setback comply with the encroachment exhibit, and that could be annexed to the decision.
Okay. I would, I would then make a motion that we reverse the decision for the stream corridor, which was, which, the December decision, that we reverse that decision with the caveat that there is, this, this resolution allows for a variance for the 20-foot on the, on the road, construction, reconstruction of the road, and the incursions that you have outlined in your document for the property in terms of shaping the property, which is in the 100-foot corridor, as well as the incursion of a small amount of blacktop for parking at the, at the one section. If those, are those, those caveats acceptable?
Cassidy.
Are there any other additions to that?
No.
No. I'm chairman, I would ask you to poll the.
Will you have a motion? Do you have a second?
We have, we have a motion.
Second the stream incursion.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
And Chairman McNary?
Yes. So that, that variance is, is reversed and approved. The second is for the height variance, and I would, Mr. Perkins, is there any addition that you would like to put to that variance as we've, as we've stated in, in December?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Then we will, I will move that we, yes, I'll move that we reverse the variance decision in December for the height of the building. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay.
Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
And Chairman McNary?
Yes. Motion then, by unanimous with one abstention, is passed. So both variances are granted as stated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. I, I, one, I just want to say, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to restate our case. It was a little bit of a shock the first time, so I'm glad I was able to alleviate some concerns. We have an awesome team. Camp's great. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and thanks for your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We expect an invitation to the.
Of course, all of you guys get it.
You will, we get it.
Okay.
Can we get him like an honors?
Let's go to. All right. Finally.
Wait a second, who's, who else is here?
We have.
I'm so sorry.
I would. We have a new public hearing for JASA LLC 21-21Z. I, I move that we open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm back again. So this is just a rehearing or a re-noticing on a area variance that this board actually originally reviewed and approved back in the beginning of 2022. And so there was a minor modification to the application, and I think it wasn't properly re-noticed, so we're here back before this board.
Right.
Just revisiting this issue again. So this property is located, it's, I, I grew up in Hyde Park, so I call it the old 9G drive-in. The applicant.
Speak to the mic a little more, please.
Yes, I snuck in many times, yes.
You snuck into the driveway?
Many times, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Actually, I think I was the driver, so. This is about a 17-acre parcel, so it's a very big parcel. And the applicant has reviewed with the planning board, they did complete seeker similar to the other project, the conversion of this property to warehouse storage. So it will be a series of storage facilities on the property. They were seeking an area variance for scale, and scale, as you know, in the town of Hyde Park really is kind of percent coverage, percent lot coverage or density. And so in the town of Hyde Park, the max scale is 40,000 square feet, and it's sort of discriminatory to larger lots. So, you know, on a smaller lot, if you are able to develop 40,000 square feet of a two-acre parcel, it's nearly half of the parcel. On a 17-acre parcel, if you're only allowed to develop 40,000 square feet, it's a little discriminatory, it's just so much less. So there was a minor increase in the scale, I think it was 60, I just want to make sure I get the number right. So we have it correct, 66,941, where 40,000 square feet is permitted. We provided you with the narrative answering the five threshold questions for your review, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Council, is there, would you comment, this is, would you comment on this?
Yes. So this application was previously before the board. They, you all reviewed it, the variance was granted. The issue that happened here was really procedural fault on our end. The application had been amended for the coverage, and when it was increased, the applicant did their due diligence. We neglected, it was an oversight.
It was an oversight.
That the public notice was not sent for the hearing. And when you have a substantial change or an increase to a variance request, you must re-notice it because there may be comments that previously weren't going to be made that might be made now that the variance was larger. So that is where we kind of had a missed up. So to ensure that there are no issues and that everything is done accordingly and the applicant has no problems moving forward, we re-noticed it. But you have done all of the analysis, so it's really just dotting those i's and crossing those t's. Of course, if you have additional questions related to the factors, you can ask. There will be, I believe, other public comment for your consideration, but otherwise, this application has remained unchanged, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we bringing material in or taking it out? I see trucks.
Net, net gain, net loss?
Okay.
Even, it's an even site at this point.
What are you getting rid of?
Um.
In other words, it looks like the trucks are coming in and out. I don't know if they're full or they're empty.
On this particular site? I don't know of any materials coming in and out, so I apologize.
On the driving? There's a big mud thing.
I, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yeah. The 9G is pretty muddy.
Okay. I'll look into it.
Is there a question? Okay. Questions? Is there anybody from the public, like to make any comments?
Gentlemen.
We're the neighbors.
Oh, you are? Okay, good. Talk among yourselves, okay. Okay.
So no comment?
No comment.
Because this is the opportunity.
Oh, we want what they're having.
Okay.
Okay.
Take two.
All right. That said, then I would, I would move for closing the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a resolution. Let me quickly, quickly read this. This is a resolution to grant an area variance, JASA LLC 1234, that's an interesting route, 9G, Hyde Park, 12538, a tax parcel number 616504524481, dated February 22nd, 2023, resolution 21-21ZB. Where the applicant, do you say KRC or just CARC?
Either one.
Where the applicant, CARC Planning Consultants, Inc., on behalf of the property owner, JASA LLC, has submitted an application for an area variance to increase the maximum permissible building scale, square footage, to construct commercial buildings at property located at 1234 Route 9G, Hyde Park, New York 12538, identified as tax parcel 616504524481, in East Park Business District, whereas the project is depicted on the planned site. Whereas, whereas, whereas the applicant seeks an area variance from zoning section 108 5.15 to permit an increased building scale of 66,941 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is the maximum allowed for the construction of an office space, warehouse, and storage unit on a 17.2-acre parcel. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board makes the following findings in accordance with section 267B of the Town Law of Hyde Park, zoning law section 108-33.6B2 regarding the requested variance. One, the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. The subject parcel covers 17.2 acres in the East Park Business District, and the proposed development will be visually concealed from the roadway and screened from adjacent, adjacent properties by extensive vegetation, including both evergreen and deciduous trees. The benefit, number two, is sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The proposed area variance will allow the applicant to develop a significantly larger portion of the sizable parcel. Moreover, the proposed development complies with the remaining bulk requirements and is outside of the wetland buffer. The alternative is to subdivide the property into multiple parcels and locate the buildings separately across each new parcel. This is both financially inconceivable for the applicant and also environmentally detrimental as it would likely increase the area of disturbance. Number three, the requested variance is numerically substantial. The applicant seeks to increase the building scale of 66,941 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is the maximum permitted. If granted, the additional 26,941 square feet represents a 67% increase. The requested, number four, the requested variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the general neighborhood or district. While the proposed project will result in a significant amount of ground disturbance to develop several commercial structures, this type of development. amount of ground disturbance to develop several commercial structures, this type of development will not negatively impact the East Park Business District. Further, the development does not exceed into the wetland buffer, and extensive vegetation on the 17.2-acre parcel will screen the development from the roadway and adjacent properties. Lastly, the planning board determined that the proposed project will not cause any significant adverse environmental impacts. The difficulties are self-created as the property owner, JASA LLC, has owned the parcel since 2012 and now seeks to develop the site. Be further resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby grants the requested variance subject to the following conditions: payment of all fees and escrow. Madam Secretary, would you poll the?
Someone second the motion, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Agarwal?
Yes.
Mr. Donley?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowen?
Yes.
Chairman McNary?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Thanks for your wait.
Good luck.
Yep. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
I'm dead serious.
I have an early patient hours tomorrow.
Dave?
They do.
Do you want to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
Can we make a motion to adjourn?
Dave?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, you want a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?